I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have an approval of minutes for February 18?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. At this time, if there's anybody in the audience that's not on the agenda that has new public business, they can raise their hand. Mr. Bradstreet?
Of course, Bill's got something to say. Well, Bradstreet, I mean, remember, please think one. This is the Ambus. We all like the Ambus. We want to see that it's run well, and it is. Selectmen are elected. They hire the town manager. This town has several boards that have important functions. They meet. We meet. I don't understand why tonight two important boards are meeting at the same time in two different locations. I think personally that it's discouraging to me that the town can't do a better job of setting the meetings up so that anyone who cares to can attend one, not have to make a choice where to go.
Thank you, Mr. Bradstreet, and I will take complete blame for this. The meeting was scheduled...
I didn't say it like...
No, the meeting was scheduled for Thursday last week because of the election on Tuesday. When I looked at my wife's calendar, she had me on a cruise last week, and I asked the board with their indulgence to change it to tonight and to keep things square to the next two weeks from today. I take complete responsibility, and it was an issue with the planning board. We understand that, but they got to move. We didn't have to.
Don't let it happen again.
Next year, I won't be chair. I won't have that kind of...
I have two minor things. I think Mr. Clark can help clear it. One, the cemetery on High Street, someone volunteered, spent a lot of time and effort to do the wheels over on that cannon down there.
It was a scout project.
All right. Whoever it was, those wheels can't sit without being rotated, otherwise you'll end up with the same problem. Can they set up a period, three months, six months, at least rotate the wheels a quarter turn?
We'll give that to the town manager to think about and come up with some thoughts on that. Are they sitting on blocks or they're not sitting on the dirt?
I didn't go into the cemetery to check on it. Whatever they're setting on, they need to, still need to be rotated. Bill can probably tell you when the, I don't know, was retired fighter that did the work on the wheels?
I don't know.
Was some time ago.
I think it was a scout project.
It was a scout project most recently. I'm sure it's been done before that.
Okay, maybe that's, but it's something I'd like to see addressed.
Thank you.
The other thing is, we have an archivist at the library. He, like me, and some of us are getting older. Does he have somebody that he's training to take his place?
I would say I know he has an assistant. I don't know what the planning, succession planning is.
Could we find out? I mean, I would hate to think that someday he's going to say, "I'm hanging it up," and we're left. Where do we go? How do we access what he's got stored there, if and need be?
That suggests you go to the board of trustees of the library. The other ones do the hiring and the hiring department.
You know, and I understand what you're saying, Bill. It's just that I want it out there so that whoever, not just me, is aware of it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Bill. Anyone else with new business?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Oh, you're just in time.
Mr. Clark.
Excuse me?
My name is Michael Miller and longtime resident of Danvers. I haven't been... Thanks, sir. It's good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I haven't been an active member in the community recently, and that's due to my service...
Sir, if you have new public business, get right to the point.
The business has to do with the setup and structure in the town opposition. So if it could just kind of quickly go through it, because I know where people are probably going to interject, and I want to be clear about what I'm stating. I'm not talking about the board of selectmen intervening regarding the hiring process, but the board of selectmen has an obligation to the town regarding the town's structure of positions and to make sure that positions are in compliance with what the town needs and also within state compliance. And it hasn't been that way. The town was using a loophole for numerous years in regards to the Veterans Service Office.
That's in the past.
I'm sorry?
That's in the past.
Right. And in the correction of that and that processor, that position, when it went out public, there was a numerous, I wouldn't say numerous, it was about 10 applicants, which isn't that many. I manage myself a very large site of over 2,400 personnel and 70 direct employees. I would generally do about 20 interviews a month due to rotations.
What does that have to do with the town of Danvers?
Because Danvers only interviewed three people for that position, and of the people selling the position and that, that had applied for that were not only overly qualified, they worked directly in VA systems, they know Visma, they had direct ties in with veteran associations and groups, working with state legislators on programs to compel for changes with speed bumps to direct, one with VSOs. There's still some problems within that program as far as there's no evaluation process, there's no formal reporting process. Evan, I'm going to screw up his nut, last name, it's Mark Aloney, something, it's Greek, it's huge, great guy down in Boston, the director of the authorizers. These people, near these people, people that deployed and served with Francisco Urina and were completely overlooked, and the position went internal to a filing clerk who, yes, meets the qualification of being a veteran, but has never filled the managerial or supervisory position. And the veterans have suffered under the town of Danvers, and I'm sorry as I'm concerned, not the town manager, but the board's failure to make sure the town manager is in compliance with the state Department of Veterans Services law regarding a VSO. Peter was not a VSO. He was the director of public health. Everyone has known he was doing the position part-time. Because of the failures in that position under him, members of this town were driving through Beverly, Peabody, Salem, and even down to Saugus to get assistance, and it can be documented just through the Visma system as to who is entering the information. So this stuff is publicly accessible, which I don't think anyone needs to have that come out, but the veterans kept their mouth quiet because the Dan, I don't know how many of the veterans are in this room, but the veterans have always carried the load, kept their mouth shut, and done the mission, and no one wants to fight with this town. This town is an amazing town. This town is one of the leading towns in this community. Steve, nice to meet you first time. You know, I've seen crap in the social media about the town, about, you know, social media stuff, Mr. Clark, we talked about the pay raise thing that was misinterpreted wrongly. We got a triple A rating. We're only in the towns with that in the region. We just saved $20 million on our schools. The town's been doing great, but there are oversights like this, and the 1,800 veterans in this community deserve it. If we can afford to pay police officers over 200, 250 grand a year, we can surely deserve to put some effort into the veterans here and not force them to go to outside towns for insistence. It's embarrassing, and people that work in this town hall have gone to those VSA group training meetings, that is not just the VSO position, people that work in the office to get rated, and when they tell people they're from Danvers, there's laughter. I was at Supreme's Roast Beef this lunch to go see my friend Tony from school and grab a cheesesteak. He's asking me what's up and what was going on. I told him I was coming here to talk about this, and the gentleman, like two behind me in line, he goes, "You're talking about the Danvers VSO, Peter Morandi." It's a joke, because I won't go in that office. Another gentleman, Bob, that works with my mother, a 78-year-old Vietnam vet, will not step foot in the VSO office in Danvers, took the information from me, gave me his social and info to run it through to one of my contacts, which I shouldn't be doing, and then directed him into the Beverly's office to get his record and to get corrections done. The poor gentleman had a fire. When he came to Peter for help, he was told, "Why don't you have your DD214? How do you not have your paperwork?" You know, the gentleman had a fire in his home. That's why these things are sent to the town. The town, hiring, I have no control over that. I know the board has no insight on that.
Mr. Chairman?
But the position does.
May I address a few of the comments of Mr. Miller's name?
Please.
...
Sorry, you're not recognized. You're not recognized.
Okay, don't recognize. Thank you. Mr. Miller was an applicant for the job. He was not interviewed. We had 19 applicants for this position. We had a, it was handled like any other hire, he's referring to the VSO position that was vacated by Peter Morandi. We had 19...
It wasn't a VSO position, I'm sorry, sir.
We haven't...
It wasn't. It's not, even on your town budget, it's not.
Mr. Chairman.
So I would appreciate it not being called that. It was out of compliance with state regulations.
We'd like to hear from the town manager.
I understand, but that doesn't...
Sir...
He's the town manager. It doesn't allow him to call something, something it wasn't.
Aye.
He's out of compliance with state regulations, please.
Mr. Miller, man...
I'm asking for a technical, what it was, Peter Titel, was director of public health, was it not?
This is new public business. It's not a place for arguments. You state your case.
And I've been truthful in everything I've said, sir.
I'm not saying you haven't. It's as interesting to me to hear what you're saying. However, this is not a place for arguments.
I'm just asking for the truthful title to be used of what he was paid on the payroll, the check for Danvers.
What are you asking for?
The proper title to be used when his payroll checks as director of public health. He was not the VSO, which is why the state twice came and talked to this town about it, twice.
But didn't force us to make a change. We waited for Peter to retire so we could fill the position properly. We're not involved in the hiring situation. The town manager does that.
I understand.
Thank you. That's enough, sir. Thank you. Please be seated.
Well, I think...
Please be seated.
The reason I was asked to address...
Please be seated.
All right. Mr. Manager, we talked about this last night. The veterans deserve to know...
Please be seated, or I'm going to join the meeting and have you removed.
We have a police officer in presence that maybe have to intervene.
Just please be seated.
It's an opportunity to address it about the veterans. The veterans have concerns.
We have a lot of, we respect the veterans in this community. I respect them as well. Thank you. Anybody else? New public business? Thank you. Hearing none. The board will vote to accept a gift in accordance with Mass General laws, Chapter 44, Section 53A. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have an application tonight from Mimosa Papa, and if I didn't, if that person is here and I didn't do too bad of a job pronouncing, I'm not seeing anyone rise, but this is a donation to the town to install a bench at either the library or John George Park in memory of her mother, Ankala Nakuchi. And again, I am asking for some liberty in the pronunciation, but I don't see anybody...
Anybody here to speak to it?
Okay, so the donation was offered through the Recreation Department, and if the will of the board is to accept the gift, then we'll work with the appropriate departments to install the bench.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you. The board will consider the application of the Danvers Historical Society, 11 Page Street, Heather Palm, manager, for a one-day all alcoholic beverage license on Thursday, April 30th, 2020, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. for a plant and sip, not slip, sip event at Glen Magna Farms, 29 Ingraham Street. Somebody here to speak to this? Thank you.
Hello, Laura Silly with the Danvers Historical Society, and this is Heather Kane, our event manager.
Heather Palm.
I'm sorry.
I was Heather Kane for a long time, now Heather Palm. So we're having a joint event at Glen Magna Farms on April 30th with Endo Cup Park. We expect it to, we're hoping for a good turnout. It should be, we hope to have at least 30 people, maybe more, maybe 50. It's a short event from 6:00 to, 6:30 to 8:30, 6:00 to 8:00, where people will be able to come to Glen Magna in our tent. We'll have things set up where they can, they're going to plant succulents in little birch containers. It's kind of along the lines of like a paint night. If anybody's been to the paint nights, it would be similar to that, where it gives people an opportunity to come there. So we're just asking for the one day, it's actually just going to be beer and wine that would be available for this event, so that's what we were requesting for April 30th.
Mr. Clerk, everything's in order?
Everything is ordered.
Thank you. Thank you. Gardner, any questions?
No, thank you.
Bill?
No comment. No, no, no questions, I'm sorry.
David?
Thank you.
Diane?
Are you selling tables to that tea thing the historical's putting on? You know, that tea?
It's a kid, that's actually, it's a kid's tea.
All right.
And that's also done with...
Probably don't want a table.
Yeah. No, that's for children.
Thank you.
What's the will of the board?
Move as presented.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck.
And the application for the second one for June 23rd.
What about June 3rd?
June 23rd, I submitted a second application.
It's not before us tonight.
Okay.
You'll have to come back, I'm sorry.
That's fine. Thank you.
The board is receipt of an application from Danvers Cares, Lila Howard, event coordinator for Light the Night Purple, a returning community walk on Wednesday, May 13th, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., beginning and ending at the library Rotary Pavilion. We have a few people here to speak to this. Wonderful. Evening.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lila Harret. I'm the director of Danvers Cares, and I will let the other two introduce themselves when they come up, but I am here to talk about the fifth annual Light the Night Purple Opiate Awareness Event. So that is a yearly walk. It's a community gathering supporting awareness of opiate and other substance use in the community. So the walk will be on Wednesday, May 13th. The registration and community resource event will begin at 6:30. We'll have a DJ there. Kevin Wood will be DJing from the Danvers Police. And let's see, I'm going to hand it over to Nancy to give us some of the details.
Hello, I'm Nancy Hathaway, Coalition member and also sponsor of the event with East Boston Savings Banks as well, an event sponsor. So I just wanted to get the board's approval as far as the logistics. It's the same one-mile route that we've had for the past five years, and we'd like to place the purple ribbons on the light posts, which we would take care of ourselves. The event sponsors are Recovery Centers of America, East Boston Savings Bank, Northshore Bank, Kiwanis Club of Danvers, St. John's Prep, the First Ipswich Bank, the DA's office, and we're just looking for those approvals tonight.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Patrick Ambrose from the Police Department. We're here to show our support for this event. We've been involved since the beginning. We think it's a great, great event for a great cause. We'll be providing and helping with security and for access throughout the walkway for blocking, directing traffic and getting the walkers safely through the route from the start to finish. Various offices will be placed on different locations that are needed to get them safely across the street and back.
I just wanted to mention one other piece about it this year. So you'll see on the flyer, you'll see the different organizations who are sponsoring. The couple of those are going to change. You might see there's a First Ipswich logo on there. Won't look like that this year, so there will be a couple of changes, but the details are correct. And one difference that we have this year is, in addition to our organizational sponsorships, that are the logos you see there, we're also providing an option for what we're calling the Purple Sponsorship, which is, for the first time, families and friends can show their support of a loved one in recovery from substance use. So for a donation of $50 or more, the family, individual or family, will receive a personalized sign along the rail trail segment of the walk. They can share a custom message of hope and recovery, up to 50 characters in length. So this just came out of the fact that a lot of individuals and families had come and wanted to support the event, but in that we don't generally just take cash donations that provided sort of a roadblock for us, but we wanted to sort of honor those donations and wishes as well. So the planning committee came up with this idea this year, so there'll be those sort of like golf cart yard signs sort of posted along the rail trail with the rail trails, Friends of the Rail Trails support as well. So yeah, it's just a way to try to continue to grow the event and try to bring in more community members. We'll also have Falcon Eyes from Danvers High School performing, and we'll have two speakers from the community who are in recovery, and they both are employees of Recovery Centers of America as well, who's always been a big sponsor and supporter as well.
Great. David, any questions?
Well, my thought is, Lila, you presented little pieces of this, but there's a television audience, and perhaps if you could summarize what the event is, how many years it's been going on, who takes part, and what is the focus of your proposal?
Thank you, yeah. So the event is called Light the Night Purple. It's a community opiate awareness event. The idea being that we want to promote the lighter side of recovery, showing that there can be hope and that there is positive, a lot of positive stories that come out of recovery. So it's just a chance for the community to get together to, you know, address substance abuse, substance use addictions, and just help to sort of reduce some of the stigma surrounding people who have substance use disorders. So it's a way of just sort of bringing some positivity to the community and opening up the dialogue around issues regarding substance use.
Thank you. All set, David?
Thank you, Diane.
You're welcome. Diane?
What do you do with the money that you raise, Lila? What exactly do you do with any funds that are donated to you?
Thanks for asking. So we use the funds, number one, to offset the cost of the walk, but we do everything we can to, you know, get donations and make sure that's taken care of. We also are able to use a little bit of grant funding to offset the costs. So we like to use some of the funds that are raised to put towards our youth development programming, our youth leadership groups, our mentorship groups. We have a youth summer employment program we've been working on for a few years now. So we're trying to invest the money directly back into the community and try out some new programs that, it just gives us some flexibility to continue growing.
Great. Thank you, Lila. Good luck.
Thanks.
Bill?
No questions. Good luck on it. Nice route. Even old people like me could run that route or walk that route, I guess.
Gardner?
No, I have no questions. It's a recurring event, and I thank you for hosting it and sponsoring it.
It's hard to believe, it's five years already.
Right.
I was going to say, I'm going to walk it again, but I've said that for four years and haven't gotten there yet, so I figured if I didn't say it, I might get there.
We'll send someone to your house at a time, all right?
What's the will of the board?
Move it as presented.
Second.
Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
The public hearing will be held in accordance with Section 2 of the Rules and Orders Governing Private Livery Service within the town of Danvers on the application of Amani Transportation 7 Dwyer Court, Danvers, Mass, to license up to one passenger car to travel on all streets in the town of Danvers to provide transportation on a reservation basis only as the paperwork in order, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, the application is in order and all the paperwork to support it is in order.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself and tell us what you want to do.
Hi, everyone. My name is Vera, and I'm the owner of Amani Transportation. I'm here to seek approval to offer services here in Danvers under one vehicle that will be located here in Dwyer Court.
Okay, and what type of transportation will you be doing?
We do Uber.
In Uber?
It's like an Uber, it's a kind of service.
By reservation, okay. Is that permissible?
That is exactly what a livery service is.
Okay, very good. Bill, any questions?
No comments. Good luck.
Gardner?
No, no questions. Good luck.
Thank you.
Diane?
All set, thank you.
David?
Thank you, Dan, none.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone with questions?
Move the calls, the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What's the will of the board?
I move we accept the application as presented.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Good luck, Peter.
Thank you.
Good luck. The public hearing will be held in accordance with Section 2 of the Rules and Orders Governing Private Livery Service within the town of Danvers on the application of PFM Services, Inc., 11 Archer Street, Lynn, Mass, to license up to one passenger car to travel on all streets in the town of Danvers to provide transportation on a reservation basis only. Mr. Clerk, is the paperwork in order?
As with this applicant, all the paperwork supporting the application is in order, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself and tell us what you want to do.
Hi, my name is Monday. I'm the owner of PFM Services. I'm seeking approval for livery services in Danvers. We currently operate in Lynn, where my office is, and we want to extend it to Danvers area.
What other communities, do you work in other communities as well?
Lynn.
Lynn, okay. All right, thank you. Diane?
All set, thank you.
David?
Thank you.
No questions.
Gardner?
All set, good luck.
Bill?
No questions. Good luck.
This is a public hearing. Anyone with questions?
Move the close the public hearing.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What's the will of the board?
I move to accept the application as presented.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Thank you.
So just a question, Mr. Clerk. How many of these licenses can we give out? And how many have been given out?
You can give out as many as the board sees.
There's no limit on these.
That's right.
Okay.
The Mass General laws require a public hearing, as indicated. You have these three applications, but at any point in time, the board could decide that they've given out enough.
Okay. And we don't know how many out by offhand?
I would have to report back to the board at their next meeting.
If you can, yeah, just for interest, yeah, thank you. The public hearing will be held in accordance with Section 2 of the Rules and Orders Governing Private Livery Service within the town of Danvers on the application of Favored Home Care, Inc., 297 Broadway, Lynn, Mass, to license up to two passenger vans to travel on all streets in the town of Danvers to provide transportation on a reservation basis only. Somebody's here to speak to that? Welcome. Introduce yourself.
My name is Richie Ofoku. I'm the owner of Favored Home Care, and that is my partner, my wife, too, Sandra and Meset Ofoku. We operate a livery service in Lynn, and they're owned and extended to the city of We operate a livery service in Lynn and they're owned and extended to the city of Danvers and I heard it's such an amazing city, so we just want to be part of the amazing thing happening in the city of Danvers.
A quick question. Can I see the application?
Certainly.
And the address, okay. So when I looked for your business online, I found two addresses, 9 Saratoga, which is on the application, but on our agenda, it says 297 Broadway.
Yeah, we moved, no, 9 Saratoga Street used to be like a residential address and they didn't allow a residential, so we have an office at 297 Broadway, so that's where we operate right now.
Okay, that's where the office, business location. Thank you. Okay. Bill, any questions?
No questions.
Gardner?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Diane?
All set, thank you. Good luck.
David?
Thank you, Dan.
So you're gonna use passenger vans?
Yes.
What type of work?
Minivan.
Minivan?
Yes.
Similar to an Uber or something different?
No, not different. Like a school, board, authority, just like a school.
So it'd be transportation, a little different situation, okay. Public hearing, anybody with questions?
Move the close of public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
What's the will of the board?
Will we accept the application as presented?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right, good luck. I did. But that's all right. I said all in favor. Okay, now we get to some exciting stuff. Glad to see these people are able to get their licenses and take care of transportation.
We have no taxis working in Danvers.
I know it, yeah.
Oh, we have them working there.
They haven't got none of their licenses.
That's a good story. And I can, just for the board's information, each one of these companies have been query. So that's good.
Thank you. The board will meet Town Accountant Candidate Heather Varney and consider her appointment to the position, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll ramble on long enough for Ms. Varney to make her way to the microphone. You did receive a packet of information on Friday. Heather Varney was one of the applicants for the town accountant job that was advertised earlier this year. She emerged through the resume review process and the first round interview panel as the preferred candidate, and she came in and met with Selectmans Langley and Bennett in February, along with Assistant Town Manager Jen Breaker. We had an interview as well with Ms. Varney, and we came out of that interview in consensus that we wanted to recommend her to the full board for the position. There's a brief memorandum from me outlining some of her experience, as well as her resume, and an updated version of the standard letter that we issued to the annual, to the town accountant on an annual basis, reiterating their statutory responsibilities in terms of reporting directly to the board on certain items that rise to that level. So I think with that, I would turn it over to Ms. Varney to introduce herself, and then I know she'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Mr. Manager?
Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, Board Selectman, thank you for having me here tonight. So my name is Heather Varney. I have probably five or six years of municipal finance experience. I started working in Lowell and I became the data analyst there, so I did a lot of data analytics. We looked at different departments, tried to figure out like how effective they were, if there was anything that they could be doing different. Trying to think outside the box a lot. And then I was promoted to the deputy CFO, so I oversaw the entire budget for the city of Lowell. Then while I was working in Lowell, I was going for my master's degree. I graduated from Salem State with my undergrad, and then I went for my master's online at Southern New Hampshire University, so I have an MBA in accounting. And once I graduated, I wanted to pursue accounting more. I think it's amazing. I know, I love all the accounting stuff. Just saying, but um...
You see how exciting it is? I keep telling you guys it's exciting.
It's so exciting.
Accounting is, it's so nice to have something like that.
It's so exciting. I just don't want to get in too much detail and bore everybody. Not everybody finds it exciting. You know, so I do have municipal experience as a town accountant as well. After Lowell, I went to Shirley, and I've been the town accountant there for a little over a year, so I have experience working more hands-on with the journal entries, you know, doing reconciliation for cash and receivables, and working on the budget there as well, and doing all of the state reporting, working with our auditor, and all the fun stuff.
Okay.
If anyone has any questions?
No. Diane, any comments?
Well, I found her to be ambitious and she thought accountant was fun, so there aren't many people that say that, but I think she's gonna be ambitious. You know, one of the great things about Danvers is our finance has always been priority to the townspeople and to the boards. She seemed to have an aggressive nature to her about wanting to always improve and to continue Danvers, and of course, we have a triple A bond rate and still always be the happiest thing that's ever happened to me in 20 years of representing Danvers. So I think she's gonna be an asset. I think her and Rodney have a great ambition about them, and I think it will be a good duo, so I appreciate that you've taken her on.
And I found that her, the accounting part doesn't excite me, but the fact that she is willing to jump in and make changes and look to improve, nothing is perfect anyways, so I really appreciated that. She wasn't bashful in the interview, I found that a good thing, too. So I'm happy that you decided to accept the position should this board offer it to you. So Gardner, you have any comments?
No, I have no questions. I'm sure that my colleagues are thorough in their interviewing, and especially with Diane's experience in the industry, I'm certain that they've made the right decision. Thank you.
Bill?
And I also agree to rely on Diane and you for your expertise in this area. It's certainly not one of my great loves and interests, but I do feel, and I've been thrown on the side of the town manager thinking that the town accountant should really be appointed by us, should be separate from the rest of the people, but it's not, it's under, we gotta change the town charter is the bottom line, because what we're doing is not what the town charter was. And, but I really welcome you here. I think you're gonna be the face of many new people that Steve's brought on board, and I'm very excited about this new generation of people we're getting to run the town, and you've got big shoes to fill to keep the town going well, so good luck to you.
Thank you. David?
Thank you, Dan. Welcome, Heather. My father was an accountant. That's about as far as I go. But I trust our, the process that a town manager has established for interviews and having other colleagues in the town take part in the interview and hiring process, and I trust Diane completely, and I'm gonna miss her terribly, so I'm all aboard.
Thank you. What's the will of the board?
I move we accept the position, accept the candidate Heather Varney, her appointment to the position as town accountant.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Congratulations and welcome aboard. Look forward to you joining us.
Thank you so much. You'll be seeing her soon. She's agreed to come on Saturday for our all-day budget workshop.
Oh, wow.
Can't wait.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before Rodney leaves, can I just ask him to have something prepared for Saturday for me?
Sure.
He sent us this great accrual switch on our payroll, which is actually a gap regulation, and if I could get almost like T-accounts on how you're moving 2021, so where, exactly the figures, where they're coming from, and exactly how we zero out in 2022 before Saturday? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you get that, Rodney? I don't understand what that means. Okay, good.
It's gonna be asked.
So Heather, we'll see you Saturday. It's nine o'clock.
You bring the donuts and coffee. That's what the person gets to do.
Well, we're pretty much on time. That's nice. 7:00 PM. The board will engage in a listening session presented by Town Engineer Stephen King and representatives from Weston and Sampson regarding environmental, societal, and infrastructural concerns as identified under the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness, MVP Plan. Stephen, welcome. Please introduce yourself for the folks at home.
Good evening, Chairman and Board. My name is Steve King. I'm the Town Engineer for the Danvers Engineering Division. Tonight, you guys are attending the listening session for the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program.
Steve? I'm gonna lift the microphone a little.
You're taller than I am.
So just to give you a little background, I know there is a pretty large agenda and we have a lot of information to go through, so I just wanna give you some key points to kind of maybe track down as Amanda and Steve from Weston and Sampson are going through their presentation. This was started in April 2017 by the Baker and Palita Administration to help complete community-driven process to identify hazards and improve resiliency. This program is currently supported by the Executive Office of the Energy and Environmental Affairs through six different regions in the state. So basically what this is, is this program provides support for cities and towns across the state to begin the process of planning for climate resiliency and climate change and implementing these priority projects that they come up with. Municipalities team a trained MVP, designate these consultants to engage stakeholders and hold community workshops to form priority projects and assess resiliency to climate change. And the big question, why are we doing this? Well, just last year alone, 52 cities and towns rewarded grants totaling over $10.5 billion for projects, which is a large sum of money. So by going through this process of the listening session, we will become an MVP community. We'll be able to apply for the upcoming FY 2020 action grants in April and hopefully be able to secure some of this funding for some of our projects that we have on the horizon. And I just wanna turn it over to Steve and Amanda right now to take over the rest of the presentation.
Steve, do you wanna mess it up and pick this off and I'll hand out the clickers?
Just for a beginning, introduce yourself on the microphone up front, somebody at home can see you.
So my name is Stephen Roy. I'm with Weston and Sampson.
Welcome, Stephen.
I'm Amanda Cohen, also with Weston and Sampson.
Welcome, Amanda. Okay.
We have an interactive part of our discussion and it involves clickers, so I'm gonna quickly hand those out if that works for everyone.
Okay.
Do you want them on? Do you want them on right now?
Sure.
You're gonna get your chocolate box.
Oh, what a nice guy he is, too.
Thank you.
Come on down.
I thought this was a chocolate bar.
He did.
I'm sorry.
Hey, Paul.
Hey, Paul. Hi, Paul.
Mine says ready.
That's good.
Okay.
I'm ready.
Yeah.
It's multiple choice.
Don't be shy, we have more.
Take one. The listening session.
They've been disinfected.
They need input from the community to go forwards for grant money from the state. So your opinion is well respected, Paul. Please take a clicker.
Some of them are brand new and they've never been used, so you may be getting one. So MVP stands for Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness, and it is a statewide program. Over 80% of the communities in Massachusetts have gone through this program or are currently going through it, just like Danvers. Part of the process includes meeting with the members of core team, which is department heads, and we've listed them up here, or other municipal leadership. So they've provided input through this process and really have made us, helped us make the state program feel more local. Another portion of this process was meeting with stakeholders. We had over 65 people meet in October, or in December, to discuss this program and the vulnerabilities and strengths in Danvers, as well as potential action items to apply for for grant funding, and the results of that workshop is what we'll be presenting tonight. If you are looking for the review of the summary in more detail, there is a report that will be posted online, and we have information on that at the end of our presentation. So I'll quickly go over the, how climate change will impact Danvers, and then again, move into the strengths and vulnerabilities that we identified in the workshop, and then we'll move on to priority action items and next steps. So the MVP program has a few, a few key points. So it's a community-led process that really is set out by the state to have a stepwise approach to fulfill the requirements of the grant. It employs local knowledge, utilizes partnerships, and is based on climate data provided from the state. And there are two phases of this grant. So you are in the first phase, the planning phase, to identify action items that become fundable in the second round. And so the second round is called the MVP Action Grant. You can receive up to $2 million for a variety of different projects, and those projects are up on the board now, so that you can see there are a variety of different projects that are available for funding. There is a 25% match requirement. That match can come from private foundations, it can come from federal grants, but it also can come from funding that you already have in your capital budget. So for example, if you're already planning to do a stormwater infrastructure improvement, you could get additional money from the state to just make that improvement even better and to incorporate climate resilience. And we've seen a lot of municipalities using requirements such as an MS4 permit that you're already having to spend money on and leveraging that to get some more funding from the state to implement projects. So I mentioned earlier that we've already had a workshop and we had over 60 participants join at the library for this event, and I'm gonna report on four different, or three different topic areas, and then we'll be seeking feedback from the public on these different areas. So the four hazards that were identified in the workshop as the top priorities are the things that we really needed to focus on at the workshop or on the board, so flooding, severe storms, coastal hazards, and drought. We've already started to see an increase in the amount of precipitation in looking at historic data, and we're projected to see this increase in the future. And with this projected increase, we're likely to see an increase in the extreme precipitation events. So for example, by mid-century, these events could increase by 8%. This leads to the flooding that we've mentioned as one of the top priorities in Danvers, or top hazards in Danvers. And when we talk about flooding, we're thinking about not only flooding that comes out of streams, water bodies, but also thinking about areas of our infrastructure that maybe is at, isn't at the capacity we need it to be for the storms that we're experiencing today and the storms that we're likely to experience in the future. So stormwater flooding, that areas of stormwater flooding in Danvers that have been identified include areas such as Ash and Purchase Streets, near the High School Field, Upper Massachusetts Ave and Upper Valley Road. Another hazard that we focused on on the day was severe storms. Some of the trends around severe storms are similar to precipitation, so we're likely to see an increase in the intensity of storms and the duration. In Danvers, I've listed a few different impacts that we've seen, specifically here, so five severe windstorms, including a few microbures between 2013 and 2019. We're likely to see this type of event into the future. The next hazard was coastal surge and erosion, so thinking about...
Amanda, excuse me, if possible, is on the oldest one in the room, could you speak up a little louder and go just a little bit slower?
Yep. I have so much material to go through, so I'm sorry I'm rushing. So I'm glad you stopped me. Is this louder? Is this better? Or, okay.
My hearing aid's turned way up.
Oh, good.
But my brain can't go as fast as your hearing.
So the next hazard we have on our list is coastal surge and erosion, so thinking about sea level rise as an impact, but also astronomical high tides and the events that will come, so stronger nor'easters and hurricanes. And I've got another map showing sea level rise and how it will impact Danvers. So this starts with a foot of sea level rise in dark red and then goes up to a light yellow, and that's six feet of sea level rise. This map is showing the impact of different hurricane events. So the green is a category one and the red is up to a category four event, and the type of flooding that could potentially occur in Danvers during these events. And there has been an upward trend in hurricane activity in the North Atlantic since 1970. And the impact of these storms really spanned three different areas. So the impacts are infrastructure. It also can be impactful on some of our vulnerable populations, so if we're thinking about seniors and youth in particular who might be isolated during these types of events, but who are also vulnerable to things like heat-related illnesses, and then also thinking about our natural ecosystems, so that erosion on the harbor and taking away from some of the beach front properties, also thinking about the natural spaces and how those will be impacted by heavier rain events, but also by drought, which brings me to the next hazard, is that we're likely to experience more what they're calling flash droughts, so droughts that last one to three months. And 2016 was the most recent example of a drought across Massachusetts, and there can be impacts to water supply, again, impacts on public health, and to the ecosystems throughout And we've already started to see an increase in temperatures, which only exacerbate the droughts that we experience. So since 1970, we've already started to see an increase in the amount of temperature on an annual basis, especially in winter months. How we would experience this annual average temperature on the ground day to day, you can think of it in terms of how many days will we experience that are over 90 degrees? So on average today, we experience around six days that are over 90, and then by mid-century, we're looking at potentially 24 days over 90. And so if you think, for me, it's helpful to think of this in terms of months. So right now, we have months and weeks. Right now, we have about a week that we see over 90 degree, 90 degrees, and into the future, we could see a month worth of days that are over 90 degrees. And then thinking about in winter, how it'll impact us, we like to put this in terms of how many days could we experience a snowfall event? So when will it drop below 32 degrees? Right now, we have around 145 days that are over, or under 32 degrees, and again, we'll see about a month and shift that we'll experience less snowfall, because we'll only see around 114 days when it falls below 32. So now we have a time to move into our clickers and test. So these were the four hazards that we identified in the workshop as the top hazard. So if we pull up the...
Can you read that?
The screen is dead. I wish it was there, too.
They're switching it over.
Can you read that, Hester?
Okay, so the polls should be open.
No, we're not seeing anything.
We're seeing nothing.
No, the question?
Yeah, the question of the flash-
Page 21.
Yeah, but explains what the audience-
I'll try to vote right now.
So are we supposed to vote for just one?
Yes. So the question here is, what hazard most concerns you? And if you pick A-
As soon as Amanda just minimizes that, it will be flooding.
Okay.
B for severe storms, which could be snowstorms, ice, and wind. C for coastal hazards. It can be hurricanes, nor'easters, sea level rise. D for drought, or E for other.
So vote now?
You get to select A, B, C, D, or E.
So just hit a letter?
Yes.
And that's it? Don't have to send?
You should see a check mark after it.
We got a blank screen.
Do we have to put it back on? Does it shut off automatically?
I see, okay.
Okay, there it is.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay.
You have to vote just one?
Yeah, just one.
Just one.
Yeah.
Hit the power button. A little orange, the orange one?
It was on. Okay, so I hit it twice.
Which one?
Ready.
I don't have one of these in my tractor. I don't know.
They were getting short hands.
And I got a check.
What was it, severe weather? Coastal flooding, drought?
It looks like a California, no.
This is probably what it's going to say.
Nevada. Iowa, Iowa voting machine.
I have to say ready.
I'm from Iowa, so I take that personally.
Check mark.
So did we all vote?
I think so. Mine says closed. Was it supposed to say closed?
Mine says ready again.
Mine says ready again.
Is there a refresh on the ground?
Oh, there it is, okay. It wasn't ready for me.
I had a check.
It says ready now.
Yeah, okay.
I think we're just going to start a new session and see if we can-
Technology.
Oh, good, we can change our minds. I like them all. Yeah. All of the above.
He's used technology.
Diane, what are you doing? Voting again?
I voted three times.
It's like every election, right?
Is this, how do you think I always win?
I'm closed.
I tried to vote again. That's why I'm always-
Did you hit it again a second time?
No. She's leading me anywhere.
I followed instructions.
Now I'm closed.
Yeah, so must I say to do something? Are you ready as well?
I went back to ready.
Yeah, that's wrong, man.
Anyways.
I gotta, I've tried to vote too many times, I guess.
I'm gonna give this to Tim. Tim, did you want to see this?
Can't pull off my Chelsea method.
For the Saturday?
Early enough.
You can have that. That was what I was asked. Don't mind my notes.
No worries.
No, no, I just scribbled. You can have that. I was on my, I want you to understand accrued accounting by Saturday.
Okay, will that work? You can do show of hands. You can do it old school.
Do you want to keep going, and I'll see if I can fix it?
Okay. All right, we'll come back to that question.
We could maybe just ask for discussion if anyone would like to offer their answer, not anonymous.
So I'll make a comment if I may-
Yes.
-concerning these issues, and I did participate in the session before. When we have a snowstorm, it impacts the community, but you can stay home, you're safe, you don't have to go out in the roads. So if you get flooding or hurricane, you're going to be impacted. It may not be safe to stay in home. You're going to get flooded, you have to leave, and where do you go? So that's why I think the flooding or followed by sea is the most hazard that most concerns me.
Right. And typically, what we've been seeing in most communities that we've been doing this type of work is flooding is the number-one issue in most communities due to the types of rainstorms that we're receiving and the current state of our infrastructure. It was built 50 years, 100 years ago, and it just can't handle the type of events that we're seeing now.
I have almost as much experience as most in the room here, but first of all, on a regular basis, snowstorms are a big hazard, you know, very difficult. However, some of us that are over 75 or so or that age, we remember back in 1954 where we, the last time that we, that we in Danvers got a major hurricane, we had two of them within about two weeks. And it devastated the community such that the whole town was like we had from a microburst last summer. And it took three, two to three weeks for people to get power back, and this is back before there were big subdivisions and things like that. And this is the longest interval we've ever had here since colonial days between major hurricanes. Because of that, we have a mast of trees that are huge, some of the huge trees in town now that overlook public streets. Back in 1954, we had had a beautiful town of a lot of big American elms, and I can remember going downtown in Danvers, and the elm trees are crisscrossing the square. They crisscross Locust Street, they crisscross Center Street. The town, there weren't such things as payloaders in those days. They had just invented chainsaws, and it took several weeks, two weeks actually, to clear the roads. It took over a week just to get the roads so you could run a fire truck in some places. That type of devastation has not happened here since 1954. However, we've had flood, back to Mother's Day flood, which was severe, the worst in my lifetime, where almost every town, every street in town was flooded, including Hobart Street. The light garage suffered over $400,000 damage when the entire storage capacity in the first floor was flooded out because idiots before our time built a building on the mill pond, essentially. And the water went over the wall on Sullivan Street rather than out the drains, and it caused severe damage. And just those kind of occasions, I don't think we're taking into consideration here because they were a little bit earlier than this, but it has happened. And, you know, we've had, as far as flooding goes, we've had three, what, 300-year floods in the last decade, something like that. It's been amazing how many quotation marks 100-year floods we've had. And with all the increased impervious surface we have in Danvers, the water runoff has been exacerbated by all these acres of pavement that we have between the shopping centers and the streets and so forth, where before, a lot of it could be absorbed in the woods and the fields of the farms and stuff. They're no longer there.
Right. No, you're correct. We've had in the northeast here, a couple of very historical events, 1938, there was another hurricane in 54, followed by another one in 55, that happened. And then some of the more recent, high-intensity rainfall events like the Mother's Day flood. So we've had our share of big events. The projections are that these are going to come more frequently and cause more damage because of the fact that we've built out our environment. So is this, this is our response up here? So response up here is-
It looks like people can vote now. Only a couple of us out.
Okay. Do you want to, do you want to revote on that question, Amanda?
I just voted now when I came up there, so people voted.
All right.
So our initial votes tallied?
Not the initial ones, just-
Do it again.
Yep. So even though you may have voted before, you should vote now.
Vote again.
If you press the wrong button and you want to change your vote, it'll update it, so don't change your-
I'm not changing my vote. Even though the guy who voted for really voting got dropped out.
10, 16, do we even have 16 people here?
Paul has two clickers. He's hiding one.
What happens when ready pops up after you've voted and it's checked it off? It says ready.
Means you're online, you're in.
Done. You don't have to send it or anything.
Nope.
Okay. So the majority of the people here believe that severe storms, snowstorms, ice, wind are the most, the hazard that most concerns you as a resident. And that's important for us to know and to understand as we put this plan together.
Can I just comment, please?
Yes.
I have difficulty discriminating between A and C. A and Cs, to me, seem to be coextensive. Taking account, Danvers and the Danvers River and Danvers Port where I came from, the flooding and the coastal hazard and the sea level rise, it seems to be both the same thing.
Yeah, maybe the best way to describe A is more of the away from the coast, not the immediate coast flooding, where the storms would hit and sea level rise, but you're further inland and it's runoff from the built-up areas.
Okay, I get you. Yep, thank you.
Okay. All right, we can move on to the rest of the presentation here. So what we did during our day-long workshop was identify issues related to infrastructure vulnerabilities and other vulnerabilities, and these were the high-priority items or the items that were identified, they're not the high ones. But it was flooding of roadways, it was things like the town's infrastructure and communications approach, dams and dikes within the town, bridges that are at risk of flooding, capacity and the condition of the emergency management, buildings themselves, the physical infrastructure of the buildings, specific areas where there's known flooding to occur, such as the DPW facility, culverts and stormwater infrastructure that's undersized, impervious surfaces causing a problem, pump stations. The town has a number of pump stations, including along Route 114, Tibbetts Ave and Dotty Street, which was part of the South Essex Sewer District, the sewer district itself and its main lines. And so we went through this process of identifying all of these infrastructure that could be vulnerable due to the climate impacts of flooding and severe storm events and drought. We did the same thing for societal impacts. So we looked at the, at impacts on seniors and youth and disabled residents and businesses as they're operating in the town, housing authority properties, public health threats, impacts on people that do not have English as their primary language, and the town needing additional resources for emergency management. We then looked at as a group environmental vulnerabilities in the town, and this falls in the category of your parks, the waterfront areas, what's happening in the ponds in town, the water supply situation, all of the environmental infrastructure and facilities within the town, the tree canopy and potential damage that's occurred and can occur during these big events, the Ipswich River itself and how it flows or doesn't flow, like during the drought of 2016, impacts on groundwater. And we also had discussions about flooding that's caused not by climate events but by natural causes such as beavers in a number of the drainage areas. We talked about electrical vehicles as an environmental vulnerability, wetlands and open space, any areas that are contaminated that could be impacted due to increased rain or flooding. And then as the temperatures are changing, we're seeing changes in invasive species as well. So all of these we're taking into account to identify the types of vulnerabilities that occur within the town. So we have another question here of what do you believe is Danvers' greatest vulnerability? Could it be any of these items up here or even something that's other? Downed power lines, flooding of critical facilities and roadways, health impacts such as vector-borne diseases, heat-related illnesses, or coastal erosion? Are we going to vote?
Yeah, we have eight votes already.
Okay. All right, you can pick any of these. Yes.
Excuse me, sir.
.......................................
You know, that is a very good question because when we have our workshop, at the end of it, we kind of forced the group to prioritize. We did a little stickering process to say, you've got three stickers to pick your three highest priorities, so that it could help us reduce the number of action items and threats to focus the plan. We didn't want to come out with a plan that would have a list of 100 different actions in it without any prioritization. So we were forcing people to pick one, pick two, pick three. So it is difficult. It's a difficult question. So power lines, you've experienced that with microbursts in the town, and then flooding of critical facilities. Okay, move on to the next one. So not only did we talk about what's most vulnerable within Danvers, we also looked at all of your strengths. You have strengths within your infrastructure, you have strengths within how you're organized, your societal organization within the town, and your environmental strengths. And these were the items that were developed during the workshop, that the town has roadways that provide a very adequate transportation service, it's very reliable, and the town management is on top of the needs of the town for transportation. You've got areas along the waterfront that's providing some protection at Pope's Landing. The electric light department, and it came out as a very high strength within the community, the fact that you have your control over your own public utility for power, the fact that you're managing your water supply and water conservation within your existing community at a very high level was a very, identified as a strength along with the DPW. What else should I highlight here? I think we came away from the day basically saying that the town operations as a whole was looked at very positively as a town that had its act together, that was managing these types of threats, and really would consider it to be a very important strength in the community. We also looked at societal strengths, that you can look at a population like the elderly population and say, that's a threat, but here, it also came out as an asset to the community, both providing the experience and the history of what's happened, and the strong youth offering energy and capacity to respond and communicate. Your facilities, like the senior center and the schools, were considered societal strengths. And your personnel, such as emergency response personnel, police, fire, ambulance, and the capacity to respond was a strength. The workforce and businesses, you've got a thriving economic base within the community, that's definitely a societal strength. And then you had some features like Endicott Park, National Guard facilities and personnel, and all your faith-based and community organizations. And then environmental strengths came up. You have a lot of open space in the town, and you have lots of farms, and you've got the Ipswich River, and you're in, you're growing your electric fleet in the community, you have an extensive rail trail system. You have an extensive rail trail system with more expansion planned. And, you know, all these were identified as environmental strengths within the community. So, the next question that comes up is, what do you believe is Danvers' greatest strength considering climate resilience? Is it the emergency response capacity of your personnel? Is it the local organizations that interact within the community? The fact that you have invested quite a bit in shelters and sheltering capacity? Or is it the things like the tree canopy? And you get to vote. So obviously, people are responding to the fact that you've got great personnel here in town and are doing a great professional job. We have another question that comes up after this one, which is, what services, initiatives, or mitigation measures are you aware of that the town is taking now in the area of climate resilience? Are you aware of tree pruning and management, stormwater activities?
Let's blackboard, connect.
Board, connect.
So reverse 911.
Reverse 911, thank you.
Did you say it again, please?
Reverse.
Reverse 911, so it's emergency calling during emergencies?
Or the calls that we get.
Right, right. So here's your all of above, Bill.
Right, in this case, you have the options of all of the above or none of the above as well.
Have already voted.
Very good, thanks.
It's a good statement that people are aware.
Can you back up and get a chance to read the percentages?
Did you record the percentages, Amanda?
Yep, they're up here.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good, very helpful. So on the workshop day, we filled out a big matrix of all of these threats, vulnerabilities, and strengths, and they became prioritized. You see, we used the little stickers to do that. This is what came out of the full-day workshop as the highest high priorities. It's working on wetlands and water bodies. It's revising, reviewing, perhaps updating your regulations to deal with new development and redevelopment within the community to make sure that it takes into account climate, future climate conditions, looking at your pump stations that could be very vulnerable and may need some upgrades, upgrading culverts in the stormwater infrastructure system. Same thing with roads and bridges, they were identified as needing attention, supporting the electric department and the power utility, emergency response, supporting that activity within the community and making it more viable and accessible to everyone, and protecting the water supply. Do you want to mention these here? Or do you need to come up here for that to talk?
There's a microphone there.
Oh, okay.
If only we would have known. So the categories.
Speak into the microphone because people won't hear you at home.
The categories that Steve just named each have specific action items related to those. Again, the detail is really captured in the report that is online for review. So we can quickly run through these if folks are interested. We are scheduled to end in about 15 minutes, and so we'll quickly run through some of these. But if one sticks out to you that you want to discuss a little bit more, feel free to chime in. Do any of these resonate with anyone in particular that they would rather focus on?
I see on the first one, the wetlands and water boards, the first bullet item is erosion control and dredging. So we have a river committee that is dedicated to that effort.
The microphone's way over there.
Wow, usually volume's not my issue. Thank you.
I heard you, God.
Do you want to repeat that?
I was just going to say, on the wetlands and water bodies, yes, the top item there, and the third item, dredging and shoring up the shoreline about erosion control is being handled, is a focus of the river committee. So we will be focusing, and that is high on that committee's plans.
But that's only a small part of the wetlands and water bodies in this town.
Well, yeah.
Nothing to do with the mill pond, nothing to do with other rivers in town earlier, further inland. And there's all kinds of issues, college pond.
And that's why I pointed to one and three, because it was specific, well, not three, the dredging along the rivers. You're right, the others are covered under the other bullets.
So, this does focus on implementing green infrastructure. So earlier, we had talked about the impervious surfaces and how that doesn't allow for stormwater to be infiltrated into the ground and be treated naturally. So some of the green infrastructure projects would help not only pollute or help reduce pollutants but reduce flooding, both stormwater and riverine, because all the water wouldn't be conveyed quickly into this water body. Instead, it would be able to soak into the ground. And so that really covers number one. And some of the other assessments and drainage information is really to get a better knowledge of what's already existing. So some of this infrastructure has been put in decades ago, and we maybe don't know the capacity of those systems or how much drainage is really going into each of these different subparts of the system. And so we need to know a little bit more information in order to make a well-informed decision of what the next step is. The next is, Steve really captured this in his assessment of regulations and really just looking at the zoning bylaws, the regulations and areas that we can incorporate climate resilience. So when new developments coming into Danvers, how can we encourage developers to be thinking about climate resilience from the beginning to save Danvers money in the long run? And also, just thinking about where development occurs and how we can do that productively. Pump stations, there's some ongoing maintenance that needs to be done related to pump stations. But often, pump stations are at the lower portion of the system, so in lower portion in elevation. So they're already vulnerable to flooding. So under extreme events, they become even more vulnerable. They also need power to operate. So you'll see the bottom bullet there is looking to install a backup generator or some kind of power source to ensure that that pump station stays online.
So back on the regulations just for a second before we move on. It could be as simple as making sure that there's adequate green space and planting around new developments and that it becomes part of the stormwater management rather than every parking lot running out into the town's stormwater drainage system, to change the approach to stormwater management on-site, to manage it as close as possible to where the stormwater is being generated off of roofs and the driveways and parking areas, and infiltrate that as much as possible. That helps feed the groundwater flow that eventually makes it to places like the Ipswich River so it can provide the base flow to the rivers.
We have a problem in this town with a couple of developers that are still working. And their modus operandi is that they get approvals for subdivisions or site plans, and then they go in for modifications. And basically, every lot in a subdivision is modified to incur more under the wetland to increase the impervious surface on the lot. And I think it's about time that our Board of Appeals and the Planning Board, and I think they already have started to take really close notice of this just recently, be aware of this because I'm downstream from a recent development, and the potential for being flooded is much more now than it ever was because of all the impervious surface. And I've got, you know, video to prove the fact that some of these engineers aren't as smart as they make themselves out to be. And with these extreme rainfall events, small-scale flooding does occur. And our streams we have in town really aren't made for recovering that. And a lot of the streets, as such, they just can't assume, they can't assume all the groundwater that's coming in there from these major events. So I just, I don't want to go any more, but this is something I think we've got to be aware of and be very careful about new development in town and how they pave much more than they really should. And they come a lot closer to wetlands than 200 or 100. They're right down to 35 feet, 2 inches, if you know what I mean.
And I can speak to something that was recently adopted in the town. We had a special town meeting, it was subsequent to the workshop that you all conducted for us in the fall. But in February, the town meeting approved new zoning for our downtown, and it included a really unique feature which addresses part of what's to be discussed, which is it allows for the transfer of development rights. So if you have undeveloped properties that could otherwise be turned into subdivisions, there's a mechanism now in the Danvers zoning bylaw that would allow developers to buy those development rights so that they maintain undeveloped and preserved where they can do water recharge. And those credits can be traded for density bonuses in the areas that the town has identified where they want to see development. Border-to-border, the number of units don't change, but it's an incentive to put the development where it can be handled with existing utilities where stormwater can be captured. So that is happening, and I think that hopefully will prove to be an effective tool moving forward.
Very good, that's very progressive to have TDRs in a town in Massachusetts. There aren't very many examples that you can turn to that are doing that type of land use control. Another high priority was dealing with all the culverts and the stormwater infrastructure in the community. And again, as we're thinking to action grants and funding to resolve the stormwater issue, a lot of this stormwater infrastructure was put in the ground many, many years ago. And not just 20 years ago, some of it was put in 80 years ago, 100 years ago. And we're asking it to operate today as if it was new. And what we're finding is, it can't, it can't possibly. It's either undersized or has infrastructure issues like metal culverts that are actually rotting out and causing roads to fail or washing out on big events. So there's a lot of that issue of corrugated metal pipes throughout Massachusetts that were put in 50, 60 years ago, and they just all need to be replaced now. So a lot of issues related to addressing the issue of stormwater drainage and culverts. And along the similar line, roads and bridges came up as a very important infrastructure area that needed attention. And it's doing more assessment of determining which roads should come up as high priority for improvements, and looking for areas to bring in some of these other control mechanisms like green infrastructure or low-impact development to try to reduce the amount of stormwater that's generated adjacent to the roads. And, you know, there were some specific suggestions that were made coming out of the workshop, like applying for funding for attempting to try some permeable pavement. There was a bridge that's leading to well number one, coordination with Middleton and the state as another high priority item. So these are all documented from the workshop? Lot of talk about the electric department and the infrastructure and the need to continue to support it since it's a, you know, a very huge strength for the community. So, one of the issues is the electric department building itself is in a floodplain and gets flooded quite a bit. So there may be a need in the short term to put up some deployable flood barriers to protect that critical building itself. And then, you know, we talked a lot about the system itself and continuing to maintain and operate it as an independent electric system. And they're going to need funding and support from the community to maintain their electric system. Emergency response was talked about in quite a lot of detail, and that was more of a coordination issue of improving the ability to make sure that you have the proper response plans in place and everyone has the right communication mechanism to make it happen. And it includes building redundancy and backup power across the communications infrastructure as well. And then, the water supply, we talked a lot about capturing water, conserving, storing it, conducting more outreach related to how much water people use and reducing water demand and use through promoting water conservation strategies. You know, the system is aging and will need some updates over time as well. And there was a need to update information about existing private wells. It kind of came away from the day, not knowing a lot of information about how many people or exactly where people were getting their water supply from private wells. So there was a little bit of a data gap there. So, got time for another question here, which is, how should Danvers prioritize climate adaptation measures? And your options are based on funding. Looking at a timeframe, important issues up front need to be addressed quickly. The asset type, should we prioritize based upon infrastructure, buildings, or natural systems? Or impacts on public safety or something else? With your AAA bond rating, I would think that focus on funding is going to be an interesting question or response here. Ah, okay. Has everyone voted that wanted to vote? Okay, impact on public safety. All right, next question, Amanda? So, now we get a priority question here of, what would rank as a top priority here? Erosion control strategies along the riverfronts? Build-in redundancies and battery backup across the communication infrastructure? Assess options for water conservation, storage, and permitting? Assess options for addressing flooding along vulnerable roads like 128, Conant Street, Pappas Street, and others?
Is there a reason why that water conservation is a term used rather than water utilization?
Water conservation is the generic term for demand management. It's basically how much water you use per capita is the way that we're using it.
I know we've had a couple of grants from the state, and our problem isn't water usage, it's water storage.
Yeah. Okay, have we voted?
Eleven of you.
You're supposed to tell them it's a home stretch, that gets people motivated.
Okay.
This is the last question, so.
That's it. All right, Amanda, you can wrap this up here now with the next steps.
So the next steps for the MVP plan, so as I mentioned, the plan will be online for public comlet. After we receive public comments back, we'll incorporate those into the plan and then we'll send it into the state for approval. And once you have received that approval, you'll be certified to apply for grants into the future. And on an annual basis, you'll just have to submit a report to maintain that status. And that really just means documents if you have applied for any grants, if you've implemented any of your priorities. And it's a very quick and easy check-in to the state to say that you're still interested in being a part of the program. in being a part of the program. So grants are due to come out at the end of April, so you're going to be eligible for that next round of funding. So one of these priority items might be something that the town decides to move forward with and apply for a grant. And so that will be coming up. So the public comment period will be open until March 31st. If you could send your comments to Steven or Sharon and it'll be available on the website. So it does have this municipal vulnerability preparedness grant tagline, but if you just go onto the homepage, this is hosted under the engineering division. So if you're just looking for it on your own, that's another way you can navigate and find it.
Is that it?
Okay, yes.
Steven, Amanda, thank you very much. Appreciate it. It's very interesting. I think back in January last year, I asked the town manager where we were in this process and here we are.
Here we are.
Yeah, a little over here, but that's okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your attention. Thank you for your input.
Okay.
I want to mention you want these back.
Yeah.
Board members will take a five-minute German.
If someone has a sign and sheet, I'll grab that.
Time out for five minutes. Item number 11, the board will hear a presentation from staff on one, language regarding the keeping of animals in residential zoning districts, and two, the Board of Health's recently adopted animal regulations. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You received some materials in your packets this weekend. Those are referenced in the agenda. The first is a memorandum from David Fields that is outlining some possible zoning changes, which we'll speak a little bit about tonight. And the second is a copy of the regulations that, the term adopted here is technically correct, but I'll explain what that means. The Board of Health had a hearing on February 20th, reviewed the regulations that you received a copy of tonight. Those were adopted insofar as they expressed support for them. They don't take effect by law until they are published. And at this point, there's no plan to publish them. Prior to the town meeting, the idea was for the Board of Health to put out into the public domain what their thoughts were in terms of regs so that town meeting members would have the opportunity to review them as part of their preparation for town meeting. I'd like to take just a second and describe some of what this memo says. We do have staff here tonight from Inspection Services, Planning, and Health to answer questions that you may have. Really what we're looking for tonight is some general direction from the board. This was not contemplated as a public hearing per se because if the board, there would be a full public hearing on this subject in preparation for town meeting on either April 21st or 22nd. But generally, the staff wanted to see what direction the board was looking for so that they could finalize the materials for the Selectman Finance Committee and ultimately town meeting on this subject. So I think one point, as the explainer in chief, sometimes I don't know a lot about everything, but I know a little bit about everything. And the way that we've been describing this is that the zoning really says where things can happen and the regulations describe how they can happen in those places. So the two documents sort of work together. The zoning determines where certain uses are permitted and the regulations would define how and under what circumstances and what the conditions would be. David Fields is not here tonight. He's at the planning board meeting, but Aaron Henry is. And as he notes in the memorandum that you received, current zoning permits the keeping of certain animals in residential two zones. It is currently prohibited in residential one and residential three. The way that zoning amendments work in Massachusetts is that on the floor of town meeting, town meeting members can restrict proposals, but they cannot expand proposals. So in other words, if the proposal were to, I think it's self-explanatory, but what I will say is that what this document shows is the language that would open up this use in all three of the residential zones. Because if the Board of Selectmen does not advance that language, town meeting would not have the opportunity to approve that. They would have the opportunity to rein that in, but they wouldn't have the opportunity to expand it, if that makes sense. So there's some technical changes that are explained in here that I think the staff and the audience would be better suited to answer than I would. But essentially, that's what you're looking at. You're looking at regulations that would determine how and under what conditions animals are kept. There would be a permit process required through the Board of Health. That would be the permitting body in town. And the zoning would really just determine which residential zones it is or is not permitted in. And of course, you've seen the memo, but for the benefit of those watching, this is an issue that was raised last year and came before the board in late 2019. And as a quick summary, there are animals in a residential one zone. A complaint was filed. An order was issued to remove the animals. That decision was appealed into the courts. It is still under appeal right now and that process is essentially on pause so that the town body, the town meeting, has an opportunity to revisit the subject, which was last acted upon by the town meeting in 2014. And I think with that, I would open it up to questions from the board for either myself or any of the staff that we have here tonight. I should identify the staff. We have Mark Carleo, health director, Aaron Henry, planner, director of planning, director of, it's a long night, we don't have clickers anymore, Landy Security Services, and Rich Muller, the inspection services director for the town.
Welcome, gentlemen. Diane, questions?
I really don't have any questions. I'm glad that you've explained what town meeting can do on the floor so that we understand why we are expanding it first. You know, this is just something that we hear over and over again, you know, we're a farm town, we're this, we're that. And then something like this comes up and we say, oh, no, but we don't want the animals there. So I really am glad that we've addressed this, that you've looked at it, as to making sure we get to town meeting. We haven't made an error. I will, of course, support this. Unfortunately, I won't be voting at town meeting, so whoever follows me, I hope, will do their reading and due diligence on this. It's not something about where are the goats. That's not what this is about. This is about something that's being addressed. And what is it we want Danvers to continue to be? And I think this addresses a need that, as with all zoning, has to be tweaked, has to be adjusted. We find mistakes. What do we really want in this town? And so I really would like to see this happen in this town. It's, again, what I hear people say to me, it's not a personal preference, but it's what people, from what I hear, is, oh, Danvers is changing, we're losing stuff. Well, this is how to keep things that we always were. So I would support this. So thank you for doing this to the staff. Great job.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Selectman Langley reminded me of two points I wanted, I forgot to mention being. One is that, and she alluded to it, by presenting this option broadly to town meeting, that doesn't prevent the board from offering a very specific opinion as part of their warrant review process. So the recommendation to town meeting could be all residential zones and the explanation could still deviate from that. That would be perfectly fine in the warrant booklet. And as I started to note and didn't completely note with these, I think staff after this discussion will be looking for some feedback on the regulations as well because although they are adopted, they are draft, they can be amended prior, you know, the Board of Health can revisit these. Once they're published, they can still be amended. So I think there's, it's an iterative process is what you're saying. If we may take action this year, we may still, two years from now, figure out that we want to tweak it in some way to perfect it.
Okay, thank you. David?
Thank you, Diane. I just, I completely support this and also want to comment that the quality of the presentation, including the work of the planning department, is, to my view, it is just scholarly and also once again reflects the quality of the process by which new people are brought on as part of the administrative team here, which in the last five years looks to me like it's been really, really well done. And this is another example. Thank you.
Thank you. Gardner?
Sure. A couple of questions. And I read the document and though I don't have the experience that Mr. Clark does, I did spend some time in my youth on a farm and understand the nature of having animals on your property. Oz wasn't the same kind of working farmer Mr. Clark has. But there were some things I was wondering about in here. Is there a permit fee?
Yes, it has not been determined yet. Mark, if you'd like to address the board, that was a question that came up at the Board of Health meeting on the 20th of February.
Yeah.
Introduce yourself for folks at home.
Excuse me, Mark Carleo, I'm the public health director for the town.
Oh, congratulations, by the way. We just got the memo.
You're getting ahead of yourselves on the agenda.
Be presumptive, alleged.
Yes.
Soon to be.
Yeah, almost. Yeah, almost. So, yeah, the Board of Health did not set a fee. We're still in the process of looking at other communities and trying to determine something that's fair to offset the cost of, you know, our part in it as well as, you know, continuing to ensure that we're enabling residents, as it states in the purpose section, to be able to engage in, you know, keeping of animals.
Will we need to have that in the regulations before we go to town meeting?
No, the Board of Health maintains a separate fee schedule. The fees are not attached to each individual regulation, but it's incorporated into the binder of regulations that we keep.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Gardner.
So having, you know, grew up chickens, cows, pigs, so on and so forth. I'm wondering why, if someone comes in and says, I want to maintain a dozen chickens, and yeah, it may fluctuate, so you say you have to list what you think the outside number would be. Why would I have to come back annually to re-permit that? I mean, I tell the town how many dogs I have and I get a license and I renew that license every year I get it. But why do I need to re-permit annually the fact that I have a dozen chickens and that's just the same year after year after year?
Well, I think that that follows the same pattern as the dog licensing. Every year you have to come back and re-license your dog. So, or add new dogs or inform the town that your dog is deceased.
No, I get if there's a modification to an existing permit. I decide to, and you say you can't transfer, you can't add things without coming back. I get that. But if I say, you know, I want to add pigs or whatever it is, I'd have to come back. But if it's just straightforward, I have the same animals that you've already permitted once, it just, do we come back and permit every time? I renew my dog license.
Yes.
True. And if I were to add dogs, I would get another license. But if I, but I don't re-permit my dog every time, I just renew the license.
So annually, around the time of permitting, we send an inspector out. So rather than send the inspector to a property that other, you know, that may no longer have the animals, we re-permit annually. It's a similar process to almost every other permit that we issue.
Okay. I also noticed then, maybe it's in another part of your Board of Health regulations, that there's nothing in here that discusses the right to inspect. It's just not in this language. It might be elsewhere. And I didn't know if it was the Board of Health that inspects or the Board of, you know, maybe the building inspectors or the zoning.
Sure. So the inspector of animals conducts an annual census. It's generally referred to as the barn book. So the inspector of animals will visit every property in town that keeps livestock, sends that report to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Division of Animal Health over at Agricultural Resources. We maintain a copy of it. It's not a public record, but that is who will be doing the inspections.
Okay. I just didn't see it in the language.
Yeah, it turned out that it wasn't necessary because the inspector of animals already has that existing authority.
All right. That's all the questions I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving me last. I appreciate that. So I can look at.
I never know who wants to go first or last.
I don't want to bias anything about this. And this is something that has been obviously very interesting to me for a long time. And we're trying to hopefully rectify finally some mistakes that, quite honestly, the planning department in this town made many years ago before anyone who's now in the town made them and make it more realistic to what's happening today. One suggestion I have is that I don't believe the ag commission was even approached about this. And there is an entity in the town that was established, I think about 15 or 18 years ago, and they've been very inactive, regrettably. Some of them have changed. But this type of item in most towns in the Commonwealth go before an ag commission to give their recommendation and their expertise because they may, unlike, I don't think any of you have ever raised chickens or goats or, you know, Gardner has, some of us have experience doing that. I just want the public to know that this is finally a response to a knee-jerk reaction. We had a town meeting probably 25 years ago when a particular individual in this town was raising rabbits in their backyard and they were raising them for meat and they were reluctant to keep them clean. They had the building right up against the side lot line of his lot and it was a very negative impact on his immediate neighbors. He refused to answer to the Board of Health at the time and the town, some people got mad about it. They introduced legislation at town meeting and it passed and it took away the rights to a lot of people in town. And promptly, about two weeks after this happened, the guy died. And it was too bad because it could have been rectified if he'd only, it would never come to a point like this. The mistake the town made was, if you look at the zoning, R1, R2, R3, R1 was very dense and I don't believe animals were ever really promoted that district, but I'll speak to that later. R2 was a more rural district, 20,000 square feet. It contained several farms, it still contains some farms in town. And I was able to fight as a town meeting member to keep it from being restricted even though I'm not affected by it because I'm exempt under the state agricultural laws. The mistake was made in R3, which the lots were 30,000 square feet. And it was an area where much more rural, in some cases, when it was enacted, there was no town water in those parts of town. So if you had septic systems and wells theoretically, you had to get more space for them. But also it allowed people who wanted horses, as for example, or cows, to have them. And they were, I won't say pets, but there were a lot of them in town right up until the 1990s when this more restrictive legislation occurred. I hope that they're the ones that are going to benefit the most from this, I think. I want to admire what you did in the setbacks. I think that's going to solve a lot of the problems. If they require the animals to be set back the 10 or 15 feet from the adjoining properties, there should not be the impact on the neighbors that there would be otherwise if they were right up next to their property. And that's a good point. I'd like to see all the numbers. First of all, you all should be aware that it's illegal to have a flock of birds less than six. That's by state law. You've got to have six. They're a flock animal. So if you have chickens, you're supposed to have at least six at a time and no one is supposed to sell you less than six chickens when you go to buy chickens. This is back from the days when the Easter bunny, you know, the Easter eggs, they used to sell the colored chickens at Easter time and such, and it was a very gross kind of thing. But also, animals live off each other very well when they live together. Society today is going back, if you will, to more holistic eras. I know that, Mark, you and your significant other has been one of those people. I know they had one of, they had one of, they had one of the best gardens in the town here for many, many years down on Milton Road. And other people like that, they enjoy it. And I love to see young people, especially young kids, if they take chickens and what an experience it is to get the baby chicks and run them through maturity. I'm getting 50 tomorrow, hopefully, and have some again on our farm. We haven't had them for several years. But it's a great experience for young children to be able to pick up a chick or see a chicken lay an egg. I had a cousin from Salem that actually had a chicken laying egg in her hand when she was about 10 years old and what an experience that was. She didn't realize that they were warm and moist and mucousy when you first come out and, you know, it took a while for them to dry out. Great experience. Beekeeping, great experience. One thing that you haven't made aware of here, and I know that, and I'm not going to tell you who it is, rat them out, or where they live, et cetera, but there is a person in a residential neighborhood in town here who gets together with their neighbors on a regular basis and every year raises 50 hens or 50 chickens for meat. They're not grown for eggs, they're grown for meat. And they have them for about nine weeks and then they all, they're all slaughtered and they're put in the freezers of two or three neighbors. Individually, these people maybe shouldn't be doing this, but it's a whole neighborhood that's kind of doing it together and no one's ratted out everyone else, except that a person who lives a street away was really upset last year, or two years ago, when he was told he couldn't have six chickens in his backyard. He said, but Bill, they got 50 chickens around the corner. I says, you know, hey, I'm not going to get in the middle of this, but it's what it is. It is what it is. They can make the chickens disappear, I guess, pretty fast if Rich goes out to enforce it. But I think that we're, I'm really excited about this finally happening because it's been, it's been, I think it's been a bad scar in our town. Yeah, the people, oh, yeah, you can do the right to farm, so we passed a right to farm law at town meeting. It doesn't mean squat. You know, this is the right to farm. If, in fact, by state law, if an area is not zoned for something else, agriculture is a right by right that you have throughout the state, going back to colonial days, not that anyone's going to push it. So I think you want to look at the numbers game you're playing here and maybe make provisions for people that may want to grow 50 chickens for a period of time for meat rather than, because there are some places in town where people are on maybe two or three acres, they got plenty of room to do it. You also want to be careful about how many large animals you allow because I know, I've had a friend in the past who used to grow a steer every year in his backyard and it was in a residential neighborhood. And the only reason the neighbors didn't, you know, cough about it was they got some real nice prime ribs out of this thing, a nice steaks out of it, and they enjoyed it. So I think we're going back to a more realistic time and I think it's nothing but good and I support it 100% of what you're doing. I think you've done a great job. But maybe look at the ag commission as some input. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, welcome. So I do agree with this. It's the right thing to do. It's silly to restrict something to one area in town. We tried it a couple of years ago at town meeting, town meeting board, he said no. But I think with the work that you've done at all levels, boys. But I think with the work that you've done at all levels, Board of Health, Land Use, Building Inspector, to come up with regulations that everybody can understand and follow through, it's the right thing to do, and I will be supporting it on Town Meeting floor. And I guess the next step is for it to come as a warrant article, which I think is, from what I hear on the board, shouldn't be much discussion unless anybody has any questions on the board, comments.
What I did miss is how we, how and where do we, if we do at all, address noise issues or noise complaints. You know, we hear it now. Someone's got a rooster next door.
They're illegal.
Those, yeah.
They're illegal.
You know, you've got other, livestock creates noise, and how do we deal with those kind of?
We don't have a noise bylaw in town much of my show grand. It's up to the police department. So if there's a noise issue, it's the police that will determine if it's offensive or not. Am I correct, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, and I would note, the overwhelming majority of our noise complaints right now are trucks operating before 7:00 a.m. I, I'm not going to out my neighbor. I have chickens and ducks behind my house, and I don't even know they're there. I think most of the animals that are contemplated under this bylaw are not noise-producing, but I think that would go back. It could be addressed through the Board of Health or with the police doing, you know, conducting sound testing the way we would for any other noise complaint.
And other than roosters, I don't know what would be offensive. Bill, you think of any?
Roosters aren't allowed. They're one of the ones.
Right, so I say other than that.
I don't know what's noisier than a dog or something.
Dogs are dogs, very bad. And so can parties that people have at three o'clock in the morning or whatever.
Well, Bill, really, if roosters aren't allowed, how do they have babies?
Oh, Jesus.
You buy your chicks from Ohio somewhere, okay? Mine are coming in from Missouri this morning, not tomorrow morning.
So the next step in the process is?
So I know there's at least one question, but we would, we would take this, if there's general support for offering a broad solution here, we would, we would go ahead and prepare zoning language and the warrant explanation that would come back before this board on either April 21st or 22nd, where there would be a public hearing on the warrant and input provided, and the board would then vote to either send it on as presented or as modified to the Finance Committee and then on to Town Meeting. And I, even as of this morning, and I want to emphasize, these are still a work in progress. I met with Rich earlier today. There are a couple of definitional issues that we want to correct. So what you're looking at isn't the final version, there's still a little work to do cleaning this up. And there may be some issues that we want to revisit with the regulations as well. I think, you know, Mr. Clark mentioned beekeeping, and I know that's come up a couple of times. The bylaw is silent, or the regulation is silent on that. So if there's direction from the board to either, you know, potentially have another Board Health hearing to take some additional input, that would be an option. But we would be looking at April 21st or 22nd to bring this back to you.
Does this make all residential zoning equal? Are there any residential zones that are not covered under the?
Mr. Henry, can you speak to that?
And I don't have the numbers, but this would treat R1, R2, and R3, which represent the bulk of the zoning, residential zoning districts in town. There are some specialty zoning districts that we did not authorize it in, but this covers, I'll say eighty-five percent of the area of the town that's zoned residential. I think there's a specialty.
Well, let's point out it's single family.
Yes, correct. Thank you. That's a, that's a better way of putting it. This is all the single family detached zoning districts.
If that's, if that's a request, we can have that, all of that data available for the hearing on the 21st, 22nd.
I'm just wondering if we're going to, you know, two or three years from now, someone's going to say, "I live in R-whatever, and it's not covered, and I want this considered." So I'd just like the discussion about why certain Rs were, or certain special zones were omitted for consideration.
I think Rich may be able to speak a little bit.
I'm sure there's a sound reason, I just, I'm wondering what it is.
Rich Maloney, Inspector of Buildings. We have three specialty zones, R1A, R2A, and R3O, and they're all essentially multifamily zones.
Okay.
Condos, stuff like that. So we didn't see any need to really include them.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, so does the board want to have a warrant drawn up?
Yes.
Definitely, definitely, yeah.
Okay, that's it?
And I think it's best to have a broad warrant article that we can actually reduce rather than making it.
Yep.
So just on that, the warrant language, while the proposal that we've drafted for you proposes authorizing it in the three, R1, 2, and 3, the language, the warrant language will say up to and including prohibition. That way, if later on in the process we decide we want to do something less expansive than the proposal in front of you, you'll have the leeway to do that without having to re-notice and re-advertise. So the last thing we want is to get to the floor of Town Meeting and be unable to adapt to public comment.
And the enforcement lays on the Board of Health at this point after it's voted?
If this proposal, this scheme goes forward, the Board of Health will become primary vehicle.
It's not a scheme.
Not a, well.
He's using it in the technical sense?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Framework, this framework.
The framework, the framework primary would go to the Board of Health.
Now, just for your information, the professional agricultural community is absolutely not in favor of the Board of Health being the governing board on agricultural issues. However, these aren't agricultural issues, they're residential issues. Agricultural issues are exempt from the Board of Health for the most part, except for piggies, I believe, in the state anyway.
And this, the Board of Health regs, sorry, I can't, I've got a microphone, I've got to have it. The Board of Health regulations were written, were based on a model bylaw by the Massachusetts Farm Bureau and the Massachusetts Board of Health Association. So again, we didn't, we tried to stay in our lane, so to speak.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Town Manager?
I'm all set.
Okay, good.
Can I get some chickens?
Nope. I could have a couple. You've got a six-year-old or a three-year-old keeping busy enough.
Okay, the Town Manager will report to the board on various items of interest.
I think we've covered a lot of interesting topics already, but I do have a few more to share. First, I'll note, you have quite a few meetings noticed at the bottom of your agenda tonight, including all of the upcoming budget and warrant review sessions that are scheduled for the Selectmen and the Finance Committee. So I would, I'm not going to.
Can we address those things, how you brought it up?
Sure.
Thank you. First one, the FENCOM, I think it was a change on their warrant articles from the 28th to the 29th and 30th? Because I had the 28th initially, so I assume this is what, the 29th and the 30th are the correct dates?
Correct.
Okay. On the warrant articles for the Board of Selectmen, while I have all members here on that Tuesday, the 21st, can we start at 6:30? Is that agreeable?
I'm sorry.
Six, it's okay, six, no, it's not okay to choke, but 6:30 on the 21st.
I don't see that here anywhere. Where is it?
It's, it's not double spaced, it's hard.
Oh, I see, okay, I got, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's Tuesday, April 21st.
First start at 6:30.
Start at 6:30 for our meeting.
That might help eliminate the need for the second night. Okay. Board members, there are five dates for the FENCOM. I'm happy to take the 13th or the 29th. Does anybody else want to pick a date?
Yeah, I'm going to go, I would have done the 29th or the 30th is fine with me. I'm going to skip the 14th.
I understand, right, yeah. So which one, which?
Either one of those would be great for me.
Gardner?
I can take 13th. Or did someone already claim?
No, I'm claiming that.
Okay, then I will take the 16th.
Gardner, thank you.
I'll take the 14th.
Gardner, 14th. Bill, Diane, and David can fight out the last two.
Diane, I'm trying to look, I can't find the.
It's on the last page of the agenda. So the dates open up April 29th or 30th to be at the FENCOM meeting to represent the Board of Selectmen.
I'm pretty good now. Who, what needs to be filled in?
The 29th and the 30th.
29th and 30th.
Yeah, you want Wednesday or Thursday night?
Can I just look?
Sure, we'll figure it out.
Okay, so you'll figure it out.
Mr. Chairman, one note, the, just as a reminder, the, as many Selectmen as wish to attend on the 16th are welcome. That's the night that the tech will be presenting.
Okay.
And there's no open meeting issues if all five Selectmen come and want to ask questions of the school.
Okay, that's why I want to make sure that we have somebody representing the board and that can speak.
I'll do the 29th.
Can I do the 30th?
Yeah.
So I just heard Davey will take the 30th, Diane the 29th, so we're all set there.
Did you see the article on the Globus to the qualification schools?
Yeah.
And perhaps there's something from Ann to the board to remind us.
I've taken down the dates, and I'll send them out.
And the 6:30 date, 6:30 times change. Okay, thank you.
I'm just, are they starting at seven?
Seven, yes.
Okay, thank you.
In this room.
You did receive a letter in your packets on Friday from Joel Hartnett from Osborne Tavern indicating that they are, they have ceased operations as of February 29th. And it would be appropriate for the board to invite the applicant, the license holders in on the 24th to talk about their plans. And that would, that would start the six-month window in which they can share what those plans are with the board.
Did we not start the six-month window with Applebee's the day they gave us the letter?
I'm looking at, I'm actually looking at the reg now.
We can clarify that. It would, so it would have either have started on March 5th or the 24th, depending on the answer to that.
Yeah, I think in our regulations it says from the date, but just confirm it.
We can confirm that. But we will, we'll have the clerk's office go ahead and extend an invitation for the 24th.
Thank you, certainly, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with the normal language for a hearing, show cause hearing.
Yeah, well, the six-month I'm talking about for them to come before us.
No, but as far as the notification that we'll be sending out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
One quick note, you should have received from Ann a save the date for, and I need to check the date on this, I think that's right, March 27th at 10:00 a.m. at Smith School. They'll be doing the ceremonial raising of the beam.
Didn't see that.
We didn't get that. I have one copy here, and we will get this out to the board.
What date?
Post haste. March 27th at 10:00 a.m. would be the topping off ceremony. The next school building committee meeting is on the morning of March 20th, and the beam that will be placed will be present for that meeting. So anybody that wishes to stop by from this board and sign that beam, that's typically part of the ceremony, is that the signed beam is then put in. It's the last beam that's installed as part of the project, so.
What time on the 20th?
Eight o'clock is the start of the Building Committee meeting, and if you stop by any time between eight and nine, or even a little later than that, we'll make sure that folks are around too.
And the other date's the 27th?
The 27th at 10:00 a.m., and we'll get that out by email tomorrow.
Thank you.
27.
Have we got a Christmas tree to put on it?
I don't know.
Easter basket.
It's a Christmas tree you put on it.
Yeah, you put a tree.
It's groundbreaking.
So most of the thunder's been stolen, but I also have a few personnel updates to share tonight. Since Mr. Carleo is still in the audience, I'll start, I'll start there. Peter Morandi retired this spring after thirty years of service to the town. He was our Public Health Director and our Veteran Services Officer. And with his retirement, we knew we were going to be filling two positions once he retired. So Mark has been an employee of the town for eighteen years. He apprenticed under Peter for quite some time. We did advertise the position publicly for thirty days. We had a strong response. Mark interviewed with the, with the first panel, which consisted of a variety of staff, and then he interviewed along with two other finalists with me. And here in the position, I'm pleased to report that. He's, he's currently pursuing his master's degree. He has been working alongside Peter for some time, and it's with great pleasure to announce that he has, will be starting soon. Will be taking off the acting title. And with coronavirus, he couldn't have chosen a more exciting time to step into the role of Health Director for municipality. So good luck to you, Mark.
Do we have testing kits around? Almost.
Congratulations, Wackes Longland.
Good luck.
You earned it.
You know, I will note, because this, this process was referenced at the beginning of the meeting, Kelly Reyes Teixeira was recently appointed as our new Veteran Services Officer. We had nineteen applicants apply for that position. We had a panel consisting of a department head, a human resources employee, and a police sergeant interview six, six candidates of the nineteen. That panel recommended three of the six move on to sit with, with me and the Assistant Town Manager. Quite honestly, any of the three of those finalists could have done the job. But, you know, Kelly has been an employee. She is, she's one of our frontline customer service employees. She's also a Marine. She's very active on the North Shore with veterans organizations. She really blew us away with her enthusiasm and her ideas and her desire really to enhance the services for local vets. So we are committed to providing her with the support and the training and the resources she needs to be successful, and she's, she's just thrilled. So I know Joe is dismayed that we're, we're going to be, typically, we're stealing from other municipalities town pools. In this case, we're stealing from downstairs to put Kelly into an upstairs office to, to step into Peter's shoes and build on the foundation that he, that he started. So we're very excited about that. And we also, we met Heather Varney earlier tonight, and I think the elephant in the room, the last personnel update that I have to share, this, this board got a sneak preview by email, but Mr. Collins has indicated that he will be retiring this year after forty-six years of service to the town. So I won't even begin to talk about shoes being filled because we, we need to, we're going to have to go to Payless and whip out our credit card, I think. But it's, I have certainly, I guess we're going to start the six-month victory lap, not victory lap, but congratulatory tour. It's certainly been my honor to work with Joe for the past five years. He's been an invaluable source of information and institutional knowledge. You need information. He has, he has the magic ability to get somebody on the phone at the state at the drop of a hat and get an answer for you the same day. And I know a lot of people within this building and across the organization look up to Joe. And he will be missed, but he will not be gone. We will figure out a way to continue to utilize his vast wealth of knowledge well into his retirement.
Excuse me one second for interrupting. Mr. Bradstreet?
Bill Bradstreet, Town Meeting Member. I don't recall his retirement going out to the community for their approval. I don't care what he wants to do, but our approval.
You could start a citizens petition, Bill. Beyond that, you're on your own, I can't help you.
I just thought I'd throw it out there. I don't think he considered our interests. I just thought I'd throw it out there, I don't think he considered our interests.
Thank you, so I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that, that was it for the, on the personnel front, and that's all that I really had. I did actually, I'm sorry, I did want to give, now that we've put Mr. Collins on the spot, I wanted to, I did want to give him a chance to talk about the primary election that we just held.
Oh, sure. Mr. Chairman, we, and members of the board, on last Tuesday, we had a total voter turnout of voters in person and early voters of 7701, which represents a percentage of 37.8, and of that 7701, 1,856 were early voters.
Wow.
What, Joe?
1,856 were early voters that voted between Monday and Friday leading up to the-
Is that online, those statistics?
Excuse me?
Are those online?
Uh, yes, I believe they're all online, I believe my assistant has posted them all online.
Historically, how has that percentage of voters been for other primaries in the past?
Much higher.
Okay.
Presidential primaries, generally the honors, for lack of a better term, state primaries a little more active, but generally the presidential primaries have been very quiet.
And we're not this time, great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it, Mr. Town Manager?
That's all that I have.
Joe, thank you. All right, consider the consent calendar.
Make a motion, we accept the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Discussion, hearing and all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Time for correspondence, selectmen, new business, previous new business updates, and closing comments, Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joe, I'm gonna miss having a little meetings in your office before our meetings here. Joe and I go back quite a way, quite a ways, and we always have good conversations, whether it's about fire trucks or whatever else, financing, yes. And one of the roles that I've taken on as, as I've been a member is to recognize people who have been outstanding in our community and passed away, and this past week, we lost the person who was very active in this town for a number of years, probably 30 years, in the town politics and town business. He was a leader of the business people in town for many, many years. Dick Spalding was a town meeting member in Precinct Two, I had the fond memory of being on the police station, psych community with Dick, and he and I were trying to have the police station put somewhere else, and we couldn't get a third vote to make it happen, and it was very frustrating. But he was a coach in Little League and all kinds of other things in town, he also took part in many town elections. He was a kind of a force behind the scenes of a lot of selectmen and a lot of school community members, and he had Spalding's Restaurant downtown where Chuck's is now, and then he started the chain of Spuds after his nickname, and at one time had six Spuds restaurants from Brockton all the way into New Hampshire. A very active individual, and a guy who still, even though he moved to Atkinson, New Hampshire relatively recently, was still very interested in what was going on in Danvers, and I'd run into him downtown and he'd be asking me this or that, or he knew a lot about our stuff, because he was seeing it either online or from the Salem News, and Dick's gonna be missed a lot, thank you.
Thank you. Gardner?
So, tonight's presentation kinda caused a, a epiphany or a discussion. Mr. Chairman, you've been very vocal or, or very embracing of items related to the environment. You've talked about the water bottles, you've tried, you've tried to initiate a lot of discussion, and we've had grassroots efforts in the past. The Board of Health has come to us with the, with the water bottles, we've had people come to us about the bags, and we seem to, and we do take action, and I've always been very impressed with the PB, I'm sorry, Beverly and its, and its conservation programs, its green programs, and the mayor's commitment to reducing the foot, the carbon footprint as much as possible. Tonight, we heard a presentation, and one of the suggestions were regulations, and I'm wondering if we shouldn't consider, I'm gonna call it for lack of a better word, a green team, an official-appointed organization within the town, I don't want to call it a commission or a board or whatever it is, but some form of, of, of department heads, citizenry, whatever, that, who focus specifically on this, when we were talking about regulations, and I don't know that they are or aren't in there, but things like if we have a development of apartment complexes or condos, we require low-flow showers or toilets, that we require energy-efficient appliances, that, you know, if it's a certain development over a certain number of units, we require a charging station or underground utilities, things of that nature, but that, that, because we kind of do it in a, in a piecemeal fashion, where sometimes it's the Board of Health, sometimes it's Planning Board, sometimes it's the building. I'm wondering if we shouldn't have a dedicated team to consider things and then bring it and say, okay, we'd like the Planning Board to consider these zoning changes, we'd like this group to consider that, we'd like the Selectmen to consider Action X, and, and make it more, kind of transport it from grassroots or spot issues to a more formal committee or, or organization, I'm just throwing out that as an idea, and I know this is your, I know this is your baby, I, I get that, but I got to thinking about it based on this discussion, it really kind of coalesced that we've got a lot of people who are well-intentioned and in individual groups, that maybe by forming a, a singular group to focus on Danvers' carbon footprint, might be, might be helpful.
Thank you, and I was trying to find my memo of January 2019, where I laid out 11 questions and action items, some of which were addressed, and one of them was a committee.
Okay, I'm sorry, I find my-
No, 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 and I, I can't find that, I probably can find it someplace, but I don't know if Steve has a copy in the folder, but there's a mechanism for appointing a committee to work on climate change issues, and I forget the name of it right now, so you bring it up. Maybe as we've gone this far, with this thing, the listening program tonight, maybe we can circle back and look at that.
I think there's opportunities, I think they outlined some.
Yep.
And I don't want the, I don't want to lose the momentum, they had a slide specifically that said regulation. It's easy to say that, but if no one is appointed to take that as a task, it may fall by the wayside.
There's a name for a committee that, in a town, so we can follow up on that, that's a good idea, thank you.
And one thought, Mr. Chairman, we, I have the document describing, it's still sitting on my desktop a year later, so I, I know exactly where it is, and we had talked at that time about the process we're completing now as being sort of foundational for pivoting toward a climate action plan, which would lay out a number of the things I think Selectment Trask is describing, but I could, I could recirculate that to you, and then we could look at a future meeting date to, to put it on for discussion.
Yeah, because we have initiated some of those things, electric vehicles, the charging stations, and I think you're right, we have more to do, but we're taking steps.
And we are, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm suggesting that maybe we can be more proactive, especially with the multi-unit developments that are coming forward and, you know.
Yep, thank you for bringing that up.
Yep.
Okay, anything else?
That's all I had, thank you.
That's it, okay. Diane?
Joe, thank you so much for your service, you are really the key to all of us being able to handle this job, and I don't know who's gonna take your place, but they're in for big surprises to how much work you really do in the town, so, but thank you, it's been, it's been an honor to serve with you. I, I wanted to address, because I'm in budget mode, as you know, I get all excited about Saturday. We have two pieces of data that were given to us that I really think, I'd like to go a little further with. One was a, a letter by Steve addressed to Mark Strout, if, if you read through this, this, it's a great letter, I've complimented him on this, and it really goes into not just how this one time will impact Danvers with how the Voke students are picked, but it goes into lifetime of, you know, that school's gonna be there a long time, and how this impacts our entire budget. I am the product of a Voke teacher, I believe in the Voke, and initially, when people were talking, oh, it needs to be changed, limited, I was like, no way will I ever support, Danvers Limited, how many kids can get in? Well, now I've been doing a lot of reading, the budget is the thing that will always start me, we owe that to the residents of this town. And so we also got here the Voke schools face in scrutiny by the mayors, and there's just a couple of things in here that I think we really need to look at, which is, what is, which really has hit me, because I know my father being a teacher, those kids were perfect to him. They weren't kids who aren't smart, I'm not saying that, but if he were here, he would say exactly what's being said in here. Isn't the Voke school for us to get Voke students, isn't it to build on the trades, which we are learning that we are short of trade people? And this, this letter here, the mayors, really goes into what we need to do, how do we get them to go? And what they're finding is the stats are that the majority are going on to four-year colleges. So we're losing the plumbers, the electricians, now, I advise all plumbers and electricians to go get a business associate's degree at North Shore Community, because you can't run a business unless you know how to handle your accounting of some, of some sort. But certainly, we are taken away from the kid who would become, so, these two pieces of data, I think, I would like to see us move on with. There are some, that the, of course, the vocational teachers or the vocational schools are against it, they just say it's a bad idea. But this, I, I'm starting to read more and more data, I don't know for a lot of reasons, I don't know what's right, but some of the stuff I've come into here, and Steve addresses it in his letter, is perhaps a minimum maximum is necessary. And I think that we need to look more into this, we owe it to future budgets to have addressed this because we can't afford to have some of these numbers that are in his letter pop up. I'm happy for the students, but it really throws the town, and we, we owe it to the citizens to keep our budget in line, and by what's going on, they have thrown our budget offline, and it's just not good, good financial responsibility on our part. So, I do hope that we go through this a little more in depth at some time, I, of course, I had to tell Steve he forgot to put the money column in, because that's what I read, but he, he likes his percent litter things, and I'm gonna leave him.
Well, the irony is Rodney actually prepared the first draft of that letter, so I'm not sure why the finance director left the money out, I can ask him tomorrow.
Yeah, so, but anyways, I really, I, I don't want these to just be something we've read, I'd like to address this and get more facts and, and follow up on some of the stuff being done here, if there is follow-up, but we owe this. Throwing around $600,000 is not something that's responsible for us to do, so those, those were, that is an issue. And the other thing is, what I was asking Rodney for for Saturday is something I know will become a question when he talks about bringing the payroll to an accrual, which I believe is still a gap regulation, I do not read gap anymore, even I get bored with that, so I believe that it is correct, it appropriates the payroll to the timing, it's a timing issue. Every audit flips it out, flips it back in, it's a normal journal entry, so I'm really glad to see us doing that. What I was asking him for was, we have to, to make the initial flip, it's gonna cost us, and so that would be in the 2021, but in 2022, when we don't have to deal with the 53rd week, it will offset, what I asked him for was, show me the progression, get me from the initial back to zero, and so he understood that, and that's what we're trying to do. I think, I think it should be addressed, and I think people need to understand that, it's, it's the right thing to do, but it's also gonna cost us, but then it won't, it will, you know, it will feed itself through and, with some journal entries, but it's, it's really a better, a better report than nothing, and I'm glad that the, the auditors asked for it, and I'm glad we're doing it, so.
Mr. Chairman, may I, just a couple comments? We did, actually, I would like to make a comment on both of those items. The, the letter that this board received at their last meeting was also discussed at the last North Shore Coalition meeting, which is a monthly meeting of the managers and mayors on the North Shore to discuss issues of, of concern or interest, and there was quite a bit of discussion on the topic of the, the vocational school admissions, and really, there are two, sort of, two concerns. One of the concerns raised by cities, New Bedford being a good example, Salem has some of these same concerns, is how the selections are made, whether the vocational school body represents or reflects the sending school community, that's one issue. The separate issue, which is the one we raised here, which is about budget predictability, is being able to plan from year to year, how many of our students are going to go there, because currently, there's no, there's no guidance, there's no criteria, and each year is a new surprise. And there was a lot of support at the North Shore Coalition for having the conversation. There will be differences of opinion about what the right fix looks like, but, but it was almost unanimous that everybody said it would be, it would be nice to know from year to year what the plan looks like. We may not agree with the plan, but at least we can build our budgets around that, which is our primary concern, is that we do everything looking ahead two, three, five, 10, 20 years, and as we'll talk about on Saturday during the budget review, a lot of our planning in anticipation of the year we're about to start was turned on its head this month because of the $580,000 assessment increase that we have to absorb in our 21 budget, and that's non-negotiable, we have to pay that. So I, we will, my understanding, Wayne Markey is our, is our appointee to that board, they have received the letter. I believe they're planning to have it on their agenda to start a discussion at their April meeting, and at least at the North Shore Coalition level, our plan after that meeting is to invite members of the school to come speak to the coalition about some of our ideas, to at least get the conversation started. And I think that's ultimately what we want, is to just get this conversation started. And we will also be talking on Saturday about the accrual issue, so we're, we do have some funding sources identified to implement it, and, and going back to my explainer role again, because I, Rodney would run circles around me on this, but essentially, what we've always done here is budget the number of pay periods in a year, which, which can change from year to year, which is why every five to seven years, we end up having to find a 53rd payroll, which spikes the budget. So the auditors have been asking for a long time that we migrate to the system that we're prepared to implement this year, and we'll be happy to provide that information.
That's it, Diane?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. David?
Thank you, Dan. Couple thoughts, compliments again to our management for the way teams are being built around here, just feels really good. Number two, Joe, I'll miss you a lot, we've been hanging out together for years, and the, I complained about some aspects of our election process some four or five years ago, and I want to say, this year, the early voting seemed to be managed beautifully. There were signs posted throughout the town reminding voters the day of the election. You know, there were people in Texas waiting four hours to vote, and in Danvers, you're walking, you see your friends, you vote. Stay around if you want, but you can go right home, plenty of parking, beautifully managed, and then finally, I don't know how many, 30 minutes later, I'm looking on the town website to see the election results, so I don't know how it could have been done better. And then I just wanted to have, say something about the Aggie and the cost to this town for our contribution to Essex Aggie, a school that I really love, I was the chairman of the board there 30 years ago. In those days, the Aggie was a throwaway place, kids that couldn't make it in their own public school systems were like thrown away to the Aggie to learn how to grow cabbage and chickens and milk cows. It was a wonderful faculty up there, collective bargaining was like a joke, we had no money whatsoever to give to those great teachers, they were wonderful. I've always been fond of the Aggie, and I've tried to keep track of the changes of, I, I know it's like, it's like Boston Latin School, you gotta take a, an examination to get in there. I think it's important to continue the conversation of how the selection process is done, otherwise, there's gonna be seething resentment among the sending communities. And the second thing is, it's too expensive, you know, I went to Tapley School, most of the window panes were intact, but there was putty around the edge falling out. The teachers went to the Salem Normal School for three years, to my money, they were the best teachers in the entire world. So throwing money at a problem is not always the answer, and it doesn't make the problem, but, and there's no amount of money that is ever gonna keep parents happy in this day when their children have to face this world. But that's a reality, we can't afford to give everybody everything that they ask for and want. So I know that, I'm sure that Wayne is paying attention to the interests of Danvers and that, so I just, the Aggie concerns me, because I want it to succeed as the wonderful place it seems to be, but also, to keep the money lit on there, okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, David. So, remember your veterans, thank the veterans for their service when you see one, and can we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good night, Danvers.